So we're going to start competing by making a couple of statements, writing some paperwork here that we need to get out of the way. We'll then move to the swearing in of our newly elected board members. Assemblywoman Downey will swear in with Cook. I believe Assemblyman Hoteling will do Mr. Remy. And Senator Gopau will swear in Joe Grillo. After that, we'll move on to the election of the Board President and Vice President. And then we'll take up public comments. So in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6, PL 1975 C 231 S 1, amended 2006 C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on December 22nd, 2020 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on December 22nd, 2020. The Asbury Park School District's mission statement is that the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education, where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. We have our election results resolved. The Asbury Park Board of Education approves to have the following statement of the results of the November 3rd, 2020 school election, made a part of the organization meeting minutes, with being elected to three-year full terms. Ms. Karita Cook, Mr. Giuseppe Joe Grillo, and Mr. Anthony Remy. At this point, we'd like to move to the oath to be administered. And we'll start with Ms. Cook being sworn in by Assemblywoman Downey.
Thank you so much.
Please mute yourselves except for the Assemblywoman and Ms. Cook. Thank you.
Thank you. And first, I just want to say congratulations to you, Karita. Karita, you know, as a woman, I'm very honored to be able to swear you in. And you're not only that, but you were the top vote getter, I heard. I saw. And I'm very proud of you. This is your first time running, right?
Yes.
And as a mom and as a resident, someone who really cares about Asbury Park, they are so lucky to be able to have you to add to this wonderful board that we already have. So you are an amazing addition. And again, I'm so proud of you. And now I'll get on with the oath, but I just want to say a few words.
Thank you.
So now, just repeat after me. I, Karita Cook.
I, Karita Cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I'm sorry, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Karita Cook.
I, Karita Cook.
solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member.
Of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Karita Cook.
I, Karita Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am not disqualified.
That I'm not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:
Disqualified.
And I'm not disqualified.
From the office of member.
For office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Due to a conviction of a crime.
Due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed.
Or offense listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA. 18A:
12-1.
12-1.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Karita.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to move to Senator Gopau and Mr. Joe Grillo.
I see Eric.
I haven't seen Vin.
Do you want to do, Remy, next or?
No, Vin's there. I see him.
You do?
He's there. He has to press the video. And the video button.
No, I see him. He has to unmute himself.
Okay, at this point, we'll move to Assemblyman Hoteling and Anthony Remy.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? First, I'd like to congratulate everybody, Anthony and Karita and Joe and the whole rest of the school board for, you know, doing what you do. Such a very important job for the community and for the youth of our towns. And, you know, it's a very difficult job as well. Sometimes it's very difficult to see that you are making a difference. But by perseverance, you do make a difference. And we respect that. You know, as Assemblymembers, we want to be able to be helpful to you. So that's for everybody. And Anthony, I want to congratulate you for your win. And I know that you did a great job on the Asbury Park School Board.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
So if you're ready. I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. I, Anthony Remy.
I, Anthony Remy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same. To the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Anthony Remy.
Anthony Remy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Anthony Remy.
I, Anthony Remy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to RS.
Pursuant to RS.
19:
19:
4-1.
4-1.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
Due to a conviction of a crime.
Due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in.
Or offense listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
18A.
18A.
Colon 12-1.
Colon 12-1.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Anthony. Best of luck to you.
Okay. Senator Gopau, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Terrific. You're perfect.
Sorry, you would think being the younger one of the three, that I would be the best at technology, but it's not true. So congratulations to everyone real quick and to Karita and to Mr. Remy and Giuseppe and as well as both of all of your running mates who ran. I remember my first time running, I got crushed. So sometimes it takes a couple of times. But congratulations to each of you. And to Angela, I see a lot of relief there on moving away from that Board President. So congratulations to you too. And to the incoming leadership also. And a special note of thanks to just an incredible Superintendent Gray, who we rely, and I know the Governor and others rely very much on her campaign when it comes to education issues very frequently. So thank you, Superintendent, for all you've given us on special ed funding and a variety of other issues that you've helped us with as we try to help districts in very difficult situations. I've known Joe for a long time. Joe, congratulations to you. And I know you're going to continue to be as passionate about Asbury Park kids as you've been during your tenure. So can you raise your hand and repeat after me? I, state your name.
I, Giuseppe.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I'll bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
In this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, state your name.
I, Giuseppe Grillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member of a Board of Education.
Of member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of that.
Of that.
Office.
Office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And state your name.
I, Giuseppe Grillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant.
Pursuant.
To RS 19:4-1.
To RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member of a Board of Education.
Of member of a Board of Education.
Due to a conviction of a crime.
Due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed.
Or offense listed.
In NJSA.
In NJSA.
18A:12-1.
18A:12-1.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Vin.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And just congratulations to everyone. I didn't get to say congratulations to all of you. Congratulations, Anthony, and congratulations, Joe. So proud of all of you.
Okay, with that, we'll take the roll for this evening's meeting.
Okay, Jeff is about to take the roll.
Yes, we have Mr. Saunders on a cell phone. So we'll call Ms. Abes Anderson.
Here.
I don't see Ms. Breach, okay? She was with us shortly. Ms. Cook?
Thanks, sir, Jeff. Hi, I'm here. I'm having trouble with my computer. Here.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Cook? Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Etienne?
Here.
Mr. Lata Raca?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
I'm here.
Okay, so let me just, the next action will be the appointment of the President. Open the floor for nominations. The nominations do not need a second. We'll take nominations for candidates. Then we will close the nomination period. And then we will take votes on those candidates based on the order in which they're nominated. So could we have nominations for Board Presidents?
I nominate Sheila Etienne.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll take a roll for President for Ms. Sheila Etienne. Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? Ms. Etienne?
No.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? So yes, Ms. Etienne has been approved as President.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, I will now be taking nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Ms. Lizinski.
Who did you nominate?
Any other nominations? We have Ms. Lizinski and then Mr. Grillo. All right, we'll take a roll for Ms. Lizinski as Vice President. Ms. Abes Anderson?
No.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Oops, I'm sorry, Ms. Cook. You need to unmute for Vice President, Ms. Lizinski?
No.
Mr. Grillo?
No.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Lata Raca?
No.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? That motion carries, Ms. Lizinski as the Vice President.
Ms. President, we didn't do a flag salute. Do you want to do a flag salute?
Yes.
And it also didn't read the certification of the election results.
I believe we did do the election results. We can do the flag salute if you like. Could you all rise for the flag salute?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're now going to open. I don't see the part that says. We're going to be opening up for public participation. Please keep your statements to three minutes. Identify yourself and your address.
If you're calling in or if you're an attendee, you can use the raise hand function on the platform. And you'll be recognized in order in which you raise your hand. If you're a caller, you can hit star 3. And that will also move you to the top of our list so that we can recognize you as well. Second to queue up. Mr. Brannigan, anybody on the comment section?
Yes, we have one caller.
Wow. Hello, hi, yeah, it's John Naplatan, President of the Asbury Park Education Association. Just wanted to call in and congratulate the new Board Member. And congratulate Ms. Etienne and Ms. Lizinski on your Presidency and Vice Presidency. Best wishes and best of luck. We look forward to working with you from the Association.
Mr. Brannigan, do we have any more callers?
At this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, and we also have our public comment email box. However, there are no emails for comments at this time. So we can close public participation.
Public participation is now closed.
And it has closed at 7:32. Okay, at this point, I think we want to turn it over to our Board Attorney, Ms. Hope Blackburn. She'll be covering school board ethics with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will try to be Adam this evening.
Ms. Blackburn, do you have a presentation that we need to give you control of? Or are you going to do it orally?
I'm going to do it orally. And then Mr. Weiss will send it around. But you will see it. So that every Board Member will have it. Because part of the requirement of the Board Member in addressing the Board Member Code of Ethics is the Department of Education regulation that requires that each Board Member also receive a copy of the School Ethics Act, read the Board Member Code of Ethics, and become familiar with it. So after I'm done with the presentation, for those members who are online, my understanding is that Mr. Hastings will do a DocuSign? Is that right? Is that correct?
Yeah, so we have already sent out, we've sent out the School Board's Ethics form, the Code of Ethics, along with a signature by a DocuSign to all our Board Members via their email.
Okay, so in general, and I'm just going to go very quickly because it's rather, it's probably difficult for you to hear me. But basically, the School Ethics Act prohibits various types of conflicts of interest for Board Members. And all of the School Ethics Act and the Board Member Code of Ethics are in 18A Section 12. Board Members are prohibited from having an interest in a business organization or engage in any business transaction or professional activity that is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of your duties in the public interest. You're not permitted to use or attempt to use your official position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for yourself, members of your immediate family, or others. Essentially, if a vendor says, "I'll pay for you to go on a trip", your basic answer should be, "No, thank you". You should not undertake any employment or service, whether compensated or not, which might reasonably be expected to prejudice your independence of judgment in the exercise of your official duties. And you should not solicit or accept any gift, favor, loan, political contribution, service, promise of future employment, or any other thing of value based upon an understanding that the gift, favor, loan, contribution, service, promise, or any other thing of value was given or offered for the purpose of influencing you directly or indirectly in the discharge of your duties. And that actually applies to Board Members and to the members of your immediate family and any business organization in which you have an interest, which would include your employer if you have any type of a management interest. The provision does not apply to solicitation or acceptance of certain campaign contributions if the Board Member has no knowledge of the reason to believe or reason to believe that if it is accepted, it was given with the intent to influence the Board Member official duties. And that tends to be a decision which has been rather fluid over the years with the School Ethics Commission. For the new Board Members, in case you are not aware, what happens is there is the whole School Board Ethics Act, Code of Ethics, that is overseen by the School Ethics Commission. The School Ethics Commission actually does three basic things. It oversees the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics. It oversees your annual financial disclosure form, which if you haven't been asked to do it, you will be asked to fill it in within 30 days of your appointment. And it's an annual financial disclosure, which actually asks for potential conflicts of interest which you may have with family members or with business interests. And then it oversees advisory opinions and complaints for violations that can be filed by various citizens. The second piece of the School Ethics Act is the Board Member Code of Ethics. And Code of Ethics was actually something that was developed by this New Jersey School Boards Association and to govern basic principles of school board membership. And a few years after it was adopted by the School Boards Board of Delegates, the state legislature is to your school board Code of Ethics. And this I'm actually going to read to you because of the requirements that you have read it. It is, and it is 18A 12-24: "I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to the schools. Desired changes shall be brought about through legal and ethical procedures. I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the needs of all children regardless of their ability standing. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, policies, and plans only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them." Essentially, that is, the board makes policy. The Superintendent is the administrator who implements the policy. Essentially, that is, the board makes policy, the superintendent is the administrator who implements the policy. "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my board members to see that that authority with the Board of Education, that there was, excuse me, the authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board," and I would also add with that, that includes, um, when you bump into somebody at the supermarket who asks you to do something, um, in your official capacity. "I will refuse to into special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of my friends. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to schools which posed would necessarily injure individuals or the schools. In all other, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools." So the board members are the intermediary between this community and the schools. "I will vote to appoint the best available after consideration of the recommendation of the superintendent." And that falls in line with the statute that provides that board members only act on personnel items uh, following the recommendation of the superintendent. "I will protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties, and lastly, I will refer all complaints to the chief school administrative officer, and will act on those complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution." And that is what you will be asked to be signing off on. So with that being said, do you have any questions? Then, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, Hope. At this point, I'd like to get a motion for all items A two, number thirteen, to A five, number nineteen.
I'll move it over. Second.
Okay. And I'll just run through these briefly, I don't know if there are any questions or comments. So we have, uh, again, the approval, acceptance of the school board ethics. We have, uh, the listing of our, uh, tentative meeting dates for the coming school year with a six P M workshop, a seven P M regular meeting. Uh, this again is the fourth Thursday of each month, except where we know that there are, um, conferences or workshops that may conflict or holidays, so that's been taken into account. We have our board committees, the adoption of Robert's Rules as our parliamentary decisionaries, our newspapers, the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster, the re-adoption of our policies and bylaws, and a requirement to acknowledge travel and related expenses, uh, for the coming year. Do you have to take any questions on those, if there are any, or comments, if there's any comments about the dates of our meetings?
Roll call, please.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grill?
Yes.
Mr. Lattarocco?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders? All those motions carry.
Madam President, may I make a motion?
All right, um, I'd like to thank everyone who came tonight, um, I'd like to thank Angela for the, the stellar job that she's done thus far as president.
Thank you. Thank you.
I acknowledge I have big, 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 big feet to step into. I ask for some patience as I look at my role. Um, I will try to do the job to the best of my ability, and if you don't know anything else about me, don't believe that the students of this district, the children of our town is my first and only priority and concern. Um, I'd like to, um, also thank Connie for doing a great job as, uh, VP. I look forward to working with Barbara hand in hand and the rest of, um, our board members. Um, Barb, do you want to say something at this point?
I just think that, uh, we're going to have a challenging year, and I appreciate all the new board members, uh, the two board members, I think that it'll take a little bit of time for you to get some, uh, get up the snuff. Um, the board of education isn't easy, and I'm there to help you if you need any, and any of the other board members, thank you.
All right, at this time, again, I'd like to thank Angela.
I didn't hear, what did she say?
I'm very short of words, um. I, I'd like, it's not that I don't know, it's we appreciate, um, it's this that I'm very short of words. Um, so at this point, I'd like to call for an adjournment.
I'll take a motion.
So I stuck in it. And may I say something, Madam President?
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you, I just want to, first of all, welcome, ladies first, Karina, I want to welcome you, Mr. Remy. This is going to be a pleasure, welcome back, Joe, and Madam Superintendent, Madam Superintendent, it's good to see you, Jeff, and also Edwin, but Madam Madam, I just, Madam President, I just want to welcome you, you're going to do an awesome job, and you may be short on words, but your heart is in it, and I know you're going to be fabulous, okay? So, thank you. Good night.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, who moved the, and who was our second? Thank you, okay. So have our roll call in? Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski? Lizinski to close, to adjourn?
Yes, I, you didn't hear me, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grill?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lattarocco?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Remy?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders? Thank you, our meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Congratulations, guys. Ladies, congratulations, ladies. Good night.
Good night. So long, farewell.
We'll see you again. Thank you.
Angela's going to sleep nice tonight. You guys sign this and turn it.